I had nothing this time, Your Honor.
I didn't either.
Anything? I noticed usually we were having Elon credit cards separately out. We didn't this time. That was just included.
Your Honor, it varies dependent upon whether or not all of the receipts have been turned in. Once they're in, then they are posted on the report. If I'm waiting for any outstanding receipts, I get council approval for payment. That way, once they're collected, I can pay it prior to the due date.
Okay.
That was the only question I had, so.
Oh, I had the same question. Good. Glad to hear that.
I do include a copy of the statement in there for your reference.
Yep, I saw that. That's why I was a little bit confused, so. Okay, any other discussion?
I don't have any.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Motion passes. Anything else?
No, Your Honor, we have nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay, well adjourned then at 6:47 PM.
I now call the November 19, 2019, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Rota will leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this great nation. We're thankful for the service members that protect us and we ask you to watch over them. Those that are deployed and those that are in safe areas, we ask you to assist them in the things that they need. To be with their families in their absence, we're grateful for the service that they provide us. We're grateful for the citizens of Riverton and for their willingness to come out this evening and we ask you to bless them that they might have the opportunity to speak and hear the things that they would like to hear. We'd like to support the good efforts of the city of Riverton and we ask thy Spirit to be with us that we might be able to do so. We ask for these many favors and blessings and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk conduct roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare the quorum is present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Bailey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and to identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Jeremy Cruz. I'm here tonight representing the Arts in Action Board in Riverton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I recently had the opportunity to attend the Wyoming Arts Council yearly summit in Cheyenne and it was a wonderful weekend and it was run by the Executive Director, who is one of Riverton's own, Mr. Michael Lang. So it was nice to catch up with him and see the good work he's doing for the arts in the state of Wyoming. He is a passionate defender and a believer in the arts. And I just wanted to come before you all tonight and before the citizens of Riverton to talk about some of the things that I learned. I've passed out a sheet here and it has really four facts on it. And these came from Ms. Mary Ann Carter, who is actually the Chairman of the National Endowment of the Arts. And she's a remarkable person, not only because she was confirmed with 100 Senate votes. So whatever else she does in life, she's got that going for her. But she highlighted a couple of facts that I wanted to bring before you guys. In Wyoming, 3% of the GDP, which is 1.1 billion, is related, is directly from the arts and entertainment sector. So that's a big number. That was very impressive to me. I would not have guessed it was anywhere near 3%. Also, almost three-quarters of a billion dollars in wages and benefits in a year come from the arts. Also, last year, almost 43% of Wyoming adults reported attending a live theater or dance exhibit and another 26% attended art exhibits. So that number seems incredible to me as well. And I just wanted to show, tell you that I looked up Idaho and Iowa and we're beating them by 10% and we're darn close to Colorado and Montana. We beat Montana, but Colorado's got us by a couple of percentage points. But that's just to say that Wyomingites enjoy the arts. They really do. It's very important to them and they get out in ways that not all the states can report. The most important number is this bottom corner on the right. Counties that are home to performing arts organizations experience population growth three times higher than rural counties that lack those institutions. So when we're looking at gaining population and bringing people and bringing workers and jobs, we cannot forget the arts. So and all these facts can be found, there's a sources list on the bottom here from the National Endowment for the Arts. It's very easy to navigate their website. And the other thing I wanted to just remind everyone is that on November 22nd, we have the Winter Art Fair, which is an Arts in Action fundraiser at the fairgrounds. So please come out for that. That'll be a great time. December 6th, of course, we have the tree lighting. In January, we've got Missoula Children's Theater coming. So that on January 13th will be the auditions for that. Great program for all the kids. On February 20th into 2020 now, we are, we're supporting an acrobatic group coming to CWC. And two days later, we're bringing Opera Wyoming from Casper. So that week you can see acrobats and opera and I encourage you to do both. And for people concerned that they might not be opera fans, I compare it to baseball. Watching baseball on TV is not the same as seeing it live and that is so true of seeing opera performers. They are unworldly. So I'd encourage everybody to come out for those events. And I thank you and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jeremy, where can people go, do you have a website that people can look for these?
Yeah, the best is the Facebook page, the Arts in Action Wyoming Facebook page. There is a website, but the Facebook is updated, as we all know.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Uh, dosinate to enana na na na, Jazzy Wildcat, enana na na na. Hello, I'm Jazzy Wildcat. I'm currently a junior at the high school. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the mayor for proclaiming November as Native American Heritage Month. Even though such a proclamation maybe, it may seem, you know, irrelevant and inconsequential to some. But I'm here to say that even something that seems so small can make such a big impact. There are many times that not me, as a native person, struggled to get people to understand that our heritage and the path that my ancestors walked. For me to be here today. My family walked the Trail of Tears. My family survived the Sand Creek massacre. My grandma was relocated and survived attempted assimilation. It was because of their strength and resiliency that I am here today. Native people make up about 2% of the country's population and there are 573 federally recognized tribes. Each tribe is different and unique in their own every way. We have all survived similar atrocities to get to where we are today. Because of that strength, we have preserved, persevered. Our warriors serve in the military at a rate of five times the national average. We have natives saving lives as doctors, playing professional sports, running successful businesses, and others are changing the world through their respective work. Sure, we have our struggles too. Four out of five native women will be victims of violence and 10 times likely to be a victim of murder. Our suicide rate is 3.5 times the national average and our substance abuse rate is the highest of any other population. It is the negative things that you hear so often in the media, but that is what Native American Heritage Month is all about. It celebrates our rich and diverse cultures, the traditions and histories, and it celebrates the many contributions of native people. Proclamations such as these shows us that we are being seen and respected. It helps educate everyone within our community and encourages them to learn about their neighbors and fellow community members. And it brings awareness to that unique challenges that our people, that our native people have faced historically and today. It shows our perseverance in facing those challenges and hopefully encourages everyone that they too can come together and help solve these issues. So once again, I thank you for proclaiming Native American Heritage Month for November. It shows the support of our native community and it is also a big step in journey, in the journey to gain acceptance, equality, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no others that are willing to address us at this time, let's move on. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by Title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, November 5th, 2019, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, November 19, 2019, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for November 19, 2019. And approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of October, 2019.
Thank you. Are there any other items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee was for bills to be paid in the amount of $189,276.19, manual check in the amount of $29,055.23 for your liabilities for November 8th, 2019, amount of $203,246.19 for a total of $421,577.63.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
A motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Bailey. Councilman Bailey?
Your Honor, I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. The Board of Adjustments, variance appeal. Jason Howard, would the Community Development Director's report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you this evening is a request for variance from the Riverton Municipal Code. The petitioner, Mr. Jason Howard, is the owner of the property at 604 West Main Street, which has been going through a remodel. As part of the remodel, Mr. Howard approached the Community Development Department with a request to install an 80-foot flagpole illuminated by a top mount double-row LED flagpole light. The department denied the request based on stipulations set forth in the Riverton Municipal Code. In accordance with Chapter 17.04.040 of the RMC, Mr. Howard requested an appeal to the Board of Adjustment, which was denied on November 7th. Chapter 17.04.040 also allows for a final appeal to the City Council. The basis for the department's decision was based on findings of fact and conclusions of law provided in your packet. To summarize the memo, Riverton Municipal Code provides for a maximum height of 30 feet for all signs and flags along the Main Street corridor. The RMC also provides provisions for how close LED lights can be to residential zoning, as well as how bright they can be. LED lights are allowed to be no closer than 200 feet from residential zoning with a maximum allowable brightness of 1,000 NIT units. The petitioner's request to install an 80-foot flagpole exceeds the maximum allowed by 50 feet. The proposed illumination of the flagpole of 3,000 NIT units exceeds the maximum allowable brightness by approximately 2,000 NIT units. And the proposed illumination also exceeds the minimum distance of 200 feet from residential zoning by approximately 85 feet. Wyoming Stat, State Statute 15-1608 details the powers allowed for a Board of Adjustment. In this case, the law also applies to the final appeal board, i.e. the council this evening. The statute states, "No adjustment in the strict application of any provision of an ordinance may be granted unless: (1) There are special circumstances or conditions peculiar to the land or building which do not apply generally to the land or buildings in the neighborhood and have not resulted from an act of the applicant. (2) The strict application of the ordinance would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land or building. And (3) The granting of the adjustment is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare." It is important to note, the decision before you tonight is not whether an 80-foot flagpole is good or bad. The decision before you is simply whether or not the findings by the Community Development Department and Board of Adjustment are arbitrary, capricious, or contrary to the law. If it is your desire to allow the request for variance, bear in mind your response to the three inquiries included in the state statute will need to be documented sufficiently to hold up to subsequent litigation if sought. At this time, staff recommends denial of the request for variance. If the council wishes, staff would be happy to look into modification of the existing municipal code to allow for such a use. This would likely be the cleanest and simplest way to achieve that goal, if such a goal is your intent. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, do you like to speak to us on this subject?
I'm Jason Howard, proposing an 80-foot flagpole on the new construction of our building that we're proposing. It was brought to our attention through the Board of Adjusters. On November 7th, the illumination was incorrect, which can be corrected. Unfortunately, the packet that you have in front of you was not corrected in that timeframe that was allowed and stuff. So illumination can be corrected on this and stuff to meet the guidelines. Since that time, I've taken a poll, trying to collect signatures in favor of this proposal of an 80-foot flagpole. In just that short time, we've collected over 100 signatures of citizens from Riverton in favor of the flagpole. I don't know who I presented.
Thank you. Jason, some questions for you right off the top. When do you plan to install this flagpole?
At this point with Mother Nature, it looks like it's going to be probably this spring.
Okay.
Trying to get something into the ground is probably going to be realistically in the spring.
Super. We, we're at an odds here with statutes that are designed to maybe hold us from making a variance. And so what we're proposing, and Eric and staff can do this for us, we'll get a new ordinance written for flags and for a certain height. And then we'll have to get three readings on that to make it go through. But if we do it right, we could have it by the end of December. And if that works for you, I think for encouragement to you, I know that I'm in favor and any other councilman that would like to speak to his position on that would, could do that at this time. But the way the appeals board is set up, and I will call the Attorney General's office and make sure that that's the correct reading. The only way to change that would be legislatively through our five representatives could change that. But a new ordinance, we can do in three readings and we can have it ready for you by the end of December. What is the last date in December for our last meeting? Anybody have that?
The 17th, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eric says it's the 17th. So if everything went well, we'd have it for you by the 17th. Kyle, are you able to hear us on what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak on it? Mike?
Again, I think we need to look at this because I'm sure this will come up again. So I think it'd be a good idea to look at this and, you know, flags to me are not the same as signs. And so I think it'd be appropriate to come up with an ordinance that deals with flag and flagpoles separately. So I think, I think that would work very well. And I don't know if you know this, or if anybody does. Do we know how, to get something to get an idea of what 80-foot looks like, do we know how tall the flagpole at First Interstate Bank is?
I believe.
In a letter.
There was a letter from Mr. Mizerve that was in here and he said the one in front of Wells Fargo was 40 feet. He said the, uh... No, that's what he had for Wells Fargo was 40 feet. I don't know if he had anything with First Interstate.
That's the biggest one I know of around and I, I'm just, so people would have a frame of reference to place that in.
I hate to date myself, but I was one of the scouts that put the first flag up on the interstate building. And so I believe it's around 50 feet. But what we would do is with the new ordinance, we would set a lower level, would be my suggestion to the staff, to maybe set it at 50 feet, 40 feet, and then a variance possibility for people coming in to do exactly what you're doing, to take it up to 80 feet. Does council got any thought on that?
My concern wasn't as much, I guess, with the size of the flagpole, but the illumination. But you're saying you'd take care of that?
Correct. The manufacturer company that we're working with, that was their package plan. So that was a canned package plan, which can be modified. And I wasn't aware of it until November 7th that that illumination exceeded the requirements for the city. So going much less, the company is able to do that.
Jason, could you get us their minimums and what they would recommend so we don't write a rule that we had to amend right away?
Yes.
Okay, super. Anybody else? Carla?
I just, I want to say thank you because I think it's a great thing you're trying to do. Just from a community standpoint and from a personal standpoint, when, when I drive into a town like Billings or Cheyenne and I see those big flags, it just, it gets you right here. And I think it's great. I'm willing to vote for it. I feel a lot better with the illumination being reduced.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it was just under awareness last, you know, November 7th, not knowing that that illumination was over what was required in the city. So, you know, it's, looking around the state and stuff, I've done some research since that meeting and Rock Springs out of anywhere has put a 150-foot flag that was between Rotary and City funding to put that flag up. So, you know, it's, I mean, we're in a nation, proud nation, and, you know, the meeting that we had November 7th, you know, the distance from my property that we're proposing, we've got Verizon wire towers that are 115 feet. And knowing that we've got at least six in town and proposal possibly that we've got more coming. You know, it's, I almost look like 80 feet is pretty short, you know? We've already got towers 115 feet that are just scouring for skyways, you know? So when I look at 80 feet, it proportionally fits the property. That's what I need. The flag is going to be 15 feet by 20 feet at half mast. Will just clear the top of my 20-foot building. So, and there is, when you start looking at flags, there's a proportionate flag height that fits a descriptive flag size. So that's where we came up with the 80 feet. I've had a couple people wondering, where did 80 feet come from? And, you know, and in discussion with other things is engineering, wind, carrying a flag like this. Once you go beyond that, the cost deferred becomes great. To see Rock Springs put a 150-foot flag and pole is tremendous, you know, which they have to be proud of what they've done. You know, so as an individual trying to do something, I mean, I can only project that maybe somewhere down the road that the city or Rotary or some other entities collaborate together to, you know, supersede 80 feet, create the skyline rather than a Verizon tower or radio tower. So, I mean, this is one step forward towards it. I know there's going to be some litigation and variance, which I'm glad to plow through, I guess, a little bit with it and hopefully find some causation, like Mr. Bailey said, with the acceptance of a flag being less than, you know, a signage, so.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I already asked this question privately, but do you ever plan to fly any other flag than the American flag on that pole?
No, that was something that we addressed also. Knowing that that flag and ownership and anything... and anything else can be changed, um, you know, I, I love the Wyoming flag, but, uh, this is gonna be the United States' flag only. And in due process that this proposal for a flagpole of 80 feet, that this property would ever be sold down the road, I would hope that there would be amendment saying that if that flag was not to be flown, taken down, you know? So it's, um, that's, I think that can be plausibly put in a clause of some sort saying, "This is the American flag only, not a Wyoming flag, not a advertisement flag." So, you know, I may not live till tomorrow. Uh, the property may sell, um, but if that does not enclose in clause that that flagpole have the American flag, should be torn down.
Your Honor.
Please.
Um, I was actually surprisingly to some people was torn on this decision because, you know, with the code, we couldn't do it. It was hard for me to agree to that. However, I do wanna say that with the community and where we're at, I feel as a council and a community wanting to grow and become better and become bigger, um, I just wanna say thanks for, as a private citizen, taking a step forward to make change and make things happen. So it's, I, I think it's great. And, and we've had people in the past bring stuff to the council, um, or even to me as a citizen, saying, "Here, can you make this happen?" So to see other people taking the initiative to go out and do it themselves, I think is grand, and I hope that it continues to happen.
I do too.
Agree. You're good. Kyle, are you there?
Yes.
Would you like to say anything?
Uh, just that, um, I feel that, uh, I've been in Salt Lake City and driving up I-15, there are flags that far exceed 100 feet, and, uh, they're not signs, they're flags. And, uh, I think patriotic, uh, representation in the city of Riverton is far under, uh, advertised, and, and, uh, this would just be a good start. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Anyone else? So what we're gonna-
Your Honor.
Jim?
Stop.
Was your concern, I guess, with this, I mean, where we are procedurally with being against the code, procedurally, we're at a point where, you know, we're, we have to make a decision whether we'd be operating it as an, as an appeals court, basically, where we have to give deference to the decision and whether they were acting arbitrary and capricious. So we'd have to make a decision on this today. Um, my thought, I guess, would be to deny the application for variance on that basis, but then we could consider an ordinance later. Anybody that would have an interest in that one way or the other could come and talk about it. I guess from the community development standpoint, um, do you have any concerns about a flag 80 feet, if the, if the illumination were handled and, and, and were in, uh, conformance with what the code has, would you have any concerns with it, Eric?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Very minor. Uh, really, the only issue becomes, uh, traffic safety, and if we have a, a visual cue that is that far off the highway or the, the roadway, it can be, uh, potentially a detriment, but I have very little concern over an 80-foot flagpole.
Okay.
So what they're asking us to do here, so everybody understands that we will take a vote, and we'll, we'll need a motion, and the motion will be to deny the variance. But I wanted you to hear from all the council, 'cause I think you have council support in large point. Is there anyone, anybody in the audience that wishes to speak against? So let's let again us to speak if we could.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Grace Andres. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, but I am not here on behalf of the Planning Commission. I am a business owner and a resident in Riverton, and while I'm speaking as a business owner, I am also not speaking on behalf of my firm. Because of what was said here today, some of what I have thought about, uh, won't be relevant, so I'll try to weed that out as best I can going forward. There's two things you need to know about me before I address this appeal for the variance. First is that I'm one of the most patriotic people that you will ever meet. My family has served in every single branch of the military, from the Revolutionary War to present day. I love my country, and I love our flag, and one of the many things that I love about Wyoming is the patriotism that we have. I support businesses. My business helps many businesses in this community, and I plan to continue to support all businesses in our community. I want them to succeed. I want to see our community develop and grow responsibly. I am in favor of personal freedom and liberty. This is the foundation of our country. However, my freedom ends where someone else's freedom begins. As an American, we have choices. We can choose to live and conduct business within city limits or outside of those limits. By choosing to live and work within city limits, we have to be considerate of other people, our neighbors. If we have a city without ordinances, we would be like Mexico with buildings that fall down in storms and kill hundreds of people in the process. We're not Mexico, we're not a Third World country, therefore we have rules. In multiple community, communities, including our own, a flagpole is considered a sign because it draws attention. If it didn't draw attention like a sign, then we would not be having this discussion. A flagpole is not like a cell tower or a water tower. It is not just standing there tall, performing its function, and trying not to be noticed. Flagpoles hold flags that flutter in the wind and are lit at night so everyone can see them. In the past, other communities have allowed multiple signs to go up all over town, and I've heard some people talk about that this evening. These signs, as an example, in, uh, on the Boulevard, Speedway Boulevard in Tucson, Arizona, or Las Vegas, did not have any regulation. I'd like to show you a couple pictures.
Thank you. Uh, they don't need them. I won't share.
So that is an example of communities that don't have good sign regulations. History has shown us, left unchecked and unregulated, people will put up more signs, larger signs, and why shouldn't they? It makes sense to want to advertise your business by having new signs or flagpoles, and the bigger the better. Because smart people and thoughtful people take lessons from history, our community has decided multiple times to have ordinances addressing these signs. These are important to help keep us from looking like a community that has a reputation for being the ugliest street in America. Speedway Boulevard in the photo is right up there. Mr. Howard is asking for a flagpole, which would be the height of a five-story building. Someone had asked about that earlier. With almost, uh, which is almost three times larger than our current ordinance allows, and the lighting is about three times brighter than the ordinance allows. I do appreciate the fact that he's willing to modify the lighting. That's very important. Mr. Howard stated previously that he wanted his flag to show his patriotism. I don't blame him. A 20-foot flagpole is considered residential. A 30-foot flagpole is considered commercial, and an 80-foot flagpole is considered landmark. Do we want the landmark of our community to be a liquor store? Wouldn't it be better for the landmark of our community to be higher education? Or something else that has to do with the community as a whole? A place where children can gather to learn about their country in the meaning of the flag? Someone else had asked about the difference, and I'm not an artist, and you're gonna see that very quickly here, but this is the best I can do. So this is a rendition of the front of his building. Um, for scale, one inch is two feet. And currently, the flagpole by ordinance would be this. Okay? So that right there is a 30-foot flagpole. What he's asking for with 80 feet is this. Now, again, I'm, I'm not an artist, but does that help give you a little bit of a picture of what we're looking at? So one suggestion could be for Mr. Howard to take the approximately $10,130 that he's willing to spend on an 80-foot flagpole and flag, purchase a 30-foot flagpole and flag, which is about $1,368, and pledge the balance of $8,762 into a landmark flagpole and flag in a location our community that would be more appropriate. He could have a Facebook campaign and a campaign gathering signatures, as he did for this flagpole for his liquor store, and challenge others to donate. And this could be an amazing community event that would show the patriotism of our town, as well as his commu-, commitment to our community. Mr. Howard stated that he considered that half mast, the flag would not be seen in front of his 20-foot, foot, 22-foot store if it was a 30-foot flagpole. The flying of a flag at half mast while on a ship, or half-staff while on land, is, uh, is supposed to fly below the summit of the ship's mast or below the summit of a building. Therefore, the 80-foot flagpole at half-staff would not be properly below the summit of the roofline at that point. Ordinances that we have in place now were passed with much input and public discussion over the years. To randomly decide to ignore them for no good legal reason opens what you're not doing, and I appreciate that, so let's skip that part. Um, this council has been elected to represent the people of the community, all the people of the community, not just one business or one person or personal or political agendas. With that said, I am business owner. My business is on Main Street. I help individuals and businesses gain financial freedom. Perhaps I should put up a 100-foot flagpole. Our new burger and shake place needs to advertise. Perhaps they should request a 120-foot flag with a hamburger on it. How can we say yes to one and not to everyone else? This is a slippery slope. I'm asking that you please uphold the ordinances that your con, your constituents have previously agreed to, and don't decide on last minute, um, to approve this appeal, which I understand that you're not, and I appreciate that. But please, please consider, when looking at a new ordinance, that the landmark that this flag will represent is a liquor store. And if we look at the goals of the council, I don't see how that drives. So I would really ask you to reconsider that. Understand that flags are actually signs, and we need to look forward in our community, and we need to continue to grow properly, and this may not be the best way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any council responses? Is, is, before we do that, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address us on this subject? Seeing none. Are we in public hearing? No, Your Honor. Thank you. Um, is there any other discussion from the table? I too was in, um, Salt Lake over the weekend. I went to see Wyoming Cowboys play at Logan, and I drove from, I drove I-15 clear to, um, the Point of the Mountain that day, and I bet you I saw over 100 flags that exceeded this height and size. And, um, and it was extremely patriotic, and they were at, uh, car dealerships, and, um, with that said, I, I really don't feel like it's a great idea to, to put down a liquor store. Uh, I don't drink, but, um, someone that's willing to spend $10,000 of their own money to improve the, the city of Riverton, um, I'm 100% behind. And so, um, if the, and, you know, just to be a little bit, um, disappointed, isn't it, it's a shame that the, the schools or other places haven't come up with this idea prior to. And, and I wish they would've. I think you're exactly right in, in your statement. It would be wonderful to have a, a great big tall flagpole on the District 25's, uh, location, or, um, CWC's, uh, foundation ground. And so I would encourage, you know, I don't think this is the only flag that has to fly. It would be nice to see those other, other locations step up and to, to be patriotic. I do think the ordinance that we would suggest, when we talk about flying flags, we do get into slippery ground. And, and, um, you know, we, we may need to word it so that the, just sovereign nation flags can go up, and we can't raise a, a flag to, "Don't trample on me," or what, whatever is in your mind. And so I, I do appreciate your comments. Um, what we're looking at now is, I would need a motion, what I would like to get is a motion to deny the variance, if I could.
Your Honor, I'd move that we deny approval of the request for variance to install the 80-foot flagpole at 604. Says West Main. I thought it was East Main. West Main.
It's West. It's West Main.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Hancock, and a second by Councilwoman Schotza. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Now, before we move on, 'cause I really wanna make sure that this clarification gets done, we would like to, as a council, ask for staff to prepare for the first meeting in December, uh, ordinance that would address flagpoles and how we can take care of this problem, um, so that we can, can put this to rest. And I would hope to fast-track it, which would mean that we'd have to have a council meeting this, in the middle of our third meeting, would have to be a special council meeting. So Kristen, Tony, can we do those? Does that work?
Yes, Your Honor, you can run a special council meeting at the work session, normal time.
Okay. Uh, Eric, does that give you enough time to respond?
I'd be happy to put something together for you, yes.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
Your Honor, one last thing. When I did talk to the surrounding businesses, just to see how they felt about it, I think they have a right, and the neighbors, um, there was only one person that was upset about it, and it was because they didn't think of it first. So they're, they're not, they're not alone in, in what they wanna do, and I think this, like I said earlier, this will get the momentum going, to get other people to get out there and move forward, so.
I'm disappointed I didn't think of it first. It's a good idea. So, with that said, we'll move on on the agenda.
So do we need a motion for that?
Do you need a motion for that?
Your Honor, I think we understand what, what you want, and we can bring that back.
Thank you. If you have an agenda that you're looking at, we're at 10. Public hearing to consider ordinance number 19-012 on first reading. The Vasco addition deannexation, Community Development Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This one will be a little shorter. The Vasco addition to the city of Riverton was plotted in 2008. The reason it was added to the city was due to requirements from the Wyoming Business Council via a community-ready business grant that was awarded to the city to assist with the development of the 20 acres. On the city's part, water and sewer utilities were going to be provided well north of the subdivision, and a manufacturing facility was proposed as part of the project. Reasons unknown, the project stalled and eventually failed to come to fruition. Approximately nine months ago, the department was approached regarding why the subdivision was in the city at all. After researching the matter, we concluded the subdivision did not belong in the city limits, as there are no services and no intent to provide services in the foreseeable future. After discussing the matter with the city attorney, we began the process of deannexation outlined in State Statute 15-1-421. We received concurrence from Fremont County regarding the deannexation and recommended adoption, and recommend adoption of ordinance 19-012, deannexing the Vasco addition and lands owned by the Braid-A-Living Trust. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Eric. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 19-012 by title only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-012, an ordinance deannexing the Vasco addition and land owned by Breda Living Trust, generally described as parcels of land in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 15, Township 1 North, Range 4 East, Wind River Meridian, Fremont County, Wyoming.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotz has a motion, and Councilman Bailey has a second. Any further discussion? This ground lies across from the Honor Farm on the highway going north to Shoshone. It's behind the old Major's Equipment Building and the Cottonwood Courts. If anybody in the audience wants to travel out that direction, the development has no longer got legs, and it wants to be turned back into agricultural grounds, so we're not paying high taxes on it, and we're not extending any services to it. Is that correct?
Your Honor, that's correct.
Thank you, Eric. This is hard work to deannex something, and it's taken, Eric, a long, long time to get this work through. It had to go through the county commissioners and back to us, and so we appreciate his efforts. Thank you. No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare the public hearing open. Anyone, the hearing will be conducted in accordance with state law and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and to identify yourself for the records. Seeing no one, I would...
Your Honor, I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey has the motion, and Councilwoman Schotz has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-012 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion, and Councilman Rota has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. A public hearing to consider ordinance number 19-013, first reading, motorized skateboards. City administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the previous meeting, we, during roundtable discussion, the topic of Section 10.40 of the Riverton Municipal Code came up with regard to motorized skateboards. This was an item that Councilman Hancock had noted and rightfully pointed out that was obviously quite long and wasn't, wasn't that it wasn't really being enforced, it just wasn't an issue. As such, there was a short discussion, and staff was asked to bring something back for council's consideration. After a little bit of review, what we ended up trying to do on the onset was make modifications, okay, make what works, what doesn't. It seemed to be a little bit long, and obviously, we did initially remove stuff like the note from the parent that read exactly like this. We felt that was a little much. And, but, once we started getting into it, we realized that the definitions and some of the newer items that are out there actually would have made it longer and longer and longer. So, even after cutting some things and then adding new definitions, we start getting another page on top of it, and it starts being a little cumbersome. And when speaking with the chief of police, who can, of course, speak for himself here, this isn't really an issue for us within our community at this point. As such, what we decided to put before you for your initial consideration was a removal of 10.40 completely. If that is not what council would want, then we would need to have some direction as to how we should write it with regard to not only skateboards but small hoverboards. The difference of those, of course, being, you can picture what a motorized skateboard is, but we all see the little kids on the hoverboards. We want to make sure that those types of things would have been separated. However, at this point, based on the input we have and the lack of activity that we have, I don't, I don't think there was a time, was there? Can we remember any? We can't remember any time that it was actually an issue. This is one of those items, maybe it's not necessary to have. So, what you have before you is a removal of 10.40, and it is recommended by staff.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Your Honor, I just feel like he's completely correct in all that. I really don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Kristin, would the city clerk please read ordinance number 19-013 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-013 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic to repeal Chapter 10.40, Motorized Skateboards of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Rota has the motion, and Councilman Hancock has the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. I declare a public hearing is now open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, I would suggest that we close public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing, Your Honor.
Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion. Carly, did you second?
I did.
Thank you. Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number, should that be worded different? We want to drop that, don't we?
Your, Your Honor, approval of the ordinance removes Section 10.40.
Okay, thank you. The chair would entertain the motion to adopt ordinance number 19-013 by, on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Hancock has the motion, and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Further discussion? Tim?
Your Honor, I do think down the road, it would be good to sneeze. I, I, I think the, what, the one thing in this that I think I was supportive of, of this whole ordinance that's two pages, three pages, is that they say that they should be operated as close to the right as possible when they're operated on a...
Street.
I think that's the one thing that I could see keeping, is rather than worrying about people, you know, on a motorized skateboard or something like that and trying to treat it as a vehicle, I think having it be as close to the right as possible. But that was like, when I went through and looked at this, that was maybe the only thing that I thought made sense. For example, saying they can't be operated on a sidewalk, I don't think made sense, especially considering this was applying to hoverboards.
Yeah, or the rails to trails.
Or the, yeah. So, anyway, I guess I would encourage that we consider this, I mean, I think it's a good idea just to eliminate it in its entirety, but maybe come back with something that just has that, if we're going to be operating a motorized skateboard or something like that, that we stay to the right. That's it, though.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Actually, what would probably be better is if we would encourage parents to take an active role in disciplining their own children, and even for bikes use and other things, it wouldn't hurt to have a little bit of education on how they expect their children to ride those bikes and where to ride those bikes. And that would be a much better opportunity than writing other ordinance that the, that our chief really doesn't have time to stop and check to make sure your hoverboard's on the inside of the last 18 inches of sidewalk.
Your Honor?
Yes.
What we can do is have the SROs, our school resource officers, teach a class that teaches basically that with bicycles and these kind of things to stay to the right.
That's a great idea. I'm glad I thought of that.
Yeah, me too.
That would be wonderful if you could do that. And I think etiquette on the streets, you know, lots of times we see a lack of that with people with licensed vehicles. So, we would encourage that to, and just for fun at this point, I got picked up Friday night driving down I-80. I was doing 86 miles an hour, and the officer pulled me over, and I, I knew I was not in the right, and I'd just seen another patrol officer get somebody else just three miles back, and so I should have been bright enough to, to...
He thought you were good. He thought you were safe.
Yeah, there's the one in Wyoming. Here we go. He's busy. And so, as he approached my vehicle, he asked me if I understood what he pulled me over for, and I said, "Yes, sir, I was speeding." And he said, "Well, why were you speeding?" And I said, "Well, I was just talking to my wife, and I forgot to click off of my cruise control." And, and, and he smiled and said what information he needed, and I gave it to him. He went back to the car. He came back. He said, "The insurance information you gave me is not current, and that's a $525 fine if you don't have a current one." And so, I said to my wife, "Get the current one," and she got it, passed it, and, and he said, "Great." And he said, "What I'm going to do is allow, is, is just give you a warning." He didn't write one out or anything. He said, "What are you going to do?" And I told him, and he said, "Well, maybe you'll have a little bit more money to take the kids to dinner if I don't write you a ticket." I tell that story because our police officers in the state of Wyoming and in Riverton, Wyoming, are extremely courteous and kind when you are forthright with what you were doing wrong. And if we teach a class at the high school or grade schools and teach people what and how to respond, I just think that's a great idea. And the law enforcement's out there to help us, not necessarily always on a negative note. And so, I was, I was extremely pleased with how kind and gracious this officer was to somebody that was obviously breaking the speed limit by 11 miles an hour. So, I think that that would be a much better road to go down than to write another statute.
Your Honor, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
I'm glad you thought of it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. We're on to item 12, and that is a bid award for a wide-area mower. Public Director's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Since Brian did all the work on this, it's okay. I'd like to defer to him to provide this report.
Thanks.
Your Honor, members of the council, thank you. This is one of those rare times when we actually had to go to bid. We didn't have the opportunity to actually piggyback. So, this is one we wrote the specs for based on what the Parks Department required. We started bidding on October 17th and opened bids on November 7th. The bidders, Stoat's Equipment in Evansville, Wyoming, was the parent-responsive and lowest-priced bidder in the amount of $53,700. Midland Equipment out of Billings was the next bidder. Their second, their, their first primary bid, matter of specs, their second one was an alternate, did not. But it's, at this point, their high bid anyway, so we would recommend going with the low bid with Stoat's Equipment.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The chair would entertain a motion to award the purchase of a 2019 John Deere wide mower for the amount of $53,700.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, and Councilwoman Schotz has the second. Any discussion? That's a lot of money for a mower. I hope it has a cruise control. Because you can get picked up if you're not paying attention. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration for lease amendment for Verizon. City administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Riverton is in receipt of a formal request to amend the current lease with Comnet Cellular doing business with Verizon Wireless. The proposed amendment is for an already existing site. Their current agreement provides for a tower. Discussion of adding an additional tower within the already existing footprint, so no expansion, was discussed as something that would probably be better to be a little more formal so we don't get into it down the road. When we get into these agreements and these discussions, most of our, the way we set it up is based on square footage or how much, excuse me, how much of a footprint they actually have. So, they already have a lease with us. They are already paying us for that. What is recommended is that we allow them to upgrade their equipment in place. We did put, we, we did, sorry, we did put in place different verbiage within this that made sure that none of the activities that they do interfere with already existing uses, including aviation and other communication devices. This is verbiage that you're going to see more and more as we have these facilities. Why? Because we don't want to get in the middle of one company getting in the middle of another company's line of sight. If you're there first, you're there first, and everybody can work around that scenario from there. Do we expect this to be a problem? Not at all. At this point, we recommend approval of the lease modification and would be happy to answer any questions.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the amended lease agreement with Verizon Wireless as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schotz has the motion, and the second is by, who got second? Tim, are you there?
Whoever wants.
Tim. Mr. Councilman Hancock, any further discussion? I'll leave that alone myself. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. One Cent Project Update, Public Works Director, please.
Yes, Your Honor, if you don't mind, I'll get the presentation up.
Please do.
I can give him, I can get him to give the report, but I can't get him to stay and listen to me.
Wonder why that is?
You know, I won't spend too much time thinking on that one. Do you have cool, like, ways that these slides are going to be switching? I mean, I've seen yours.
Yeah, I've been thinking about it ever since then. Like, that's neat. Wish every slideshow was like that.
Okay. Let me make sure this is at the beginning. Well, Your Honor and council, this is one of my favorite times of the year because we get to come back and report to you how your 1% monies have been used and really how our community 1% funds are being used. I love this time of year. Usually, it smells like asphalt in the air, and that's because things are getting done and roads are opening up. But our community has been improved, and it is improving. So, with that preamble, I'm pleased to give you your 1% construction report for 2019. Before we do, I know some of you are new members of the council. You haven't seen this before. Some of you have, but what makes this possible is the vote that was passed by our community. And a few details on that. We receive 26.5% of the 1% funds collected across the county. The county obviously has the highest population. They receive the most, but as Riverton is the second-largest community in the county, we receive 26.5% of the 1% dollars collected. But how can we use the money? This comes up quite a bit, and fortunately, we have a 1% committee that steers the use of these monies. It's a great committee. They're very dedicated, almost to the point of, I should stop saying what I'm saying. What I will say is that they are very dedicated. And it's good that we have them in place because they are community groups steering our funds, and Tony's laughing at me right now. But how can we use the money? But how can we use those funds? By the ballot, by the resolution that was adopted by the elected officials, the monies can be used for infrastructure projects related to roads, streets, bridges, water and sewer utilities. And I'm happy to report that we have used those monies appropriately. We never go outside of the bounds of what we've been given by the public. And yes, our 1% committee helps to make sure we do that. So, when we talk about penny power, what does that mean? I like to break these up between the different votes that we've had. So, the first round of 1% was from 2012 to 2016. And if you notice, a lot of work was done across the entire community. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I wanted to visually show you what those first four years did. And as we move forward, as we're working through near now the end of our second approval of this tax, you can see that we're still spreading those funds across the entire community. They've been wonderful projects. They've been merit-based. We use our pavement assessment study all the time. We want to make sure we're making quantitative decisions along with qualitative decisions, but we never want to be accused of being capricious and unfair. So, as you see, the yellow represent the 2019 projects, so you can kind of see where we were. Red was last year's projects and blue was the year before. So, that's penny power in our community. So, let's get to this year's construction report, 2019. We had five projects come out of the 1% fund this year. It started with a project we weren't really anticipating with that Gannett Drive road repair. We then moved on to the College View Concrete Project, the E-Spell Sanitary Sewer and Resurfacing Project, the Village Drive Resurfacing Project, and finally, the South 8th East Resurfacing Project. To give you a brief report and a reminder of the Gannett Drive project, this is a great example of, I think, responding to an immediate problem, acting quickly, and using funds in an appropriate way. We know we're gonna be rebuilding Gannett, but we can't wait and put those residents... We couldn't wait, I should say, and put those residents in a bad spot by doing nothing. A local contractor took this. We put this to bid and got three informal quotes. Dave's Asphalt came in low and they were great to work with. This is what it looked like last spring. You guys remember this. And this is just one example of several sections on that west end of that road. It could not stay that way for another year. I thought I'd throw this in here. So, the big problem with that area is groundwater. That is not from sprinklers. It's not from irrigation. That is just from what is running through the dirt. So, contractor dug down about two feet and we started filling up a swimming pool. If you see Monty in the background, he's probably calling me at that point. This is what it turned out as. As you remember, we used recycled asphalt, crushed asphalt. We mixed it up and made a temporary surface which lasted through the summer. It's gonna last through the winter. In fact, as you remember, we had to drain all that water. We had that going in the curb. Our streets crews just went back, tied that in temporarily to one of our drains so that we don't have an accumulation of ice over the winter until we can get that project done. So, that was the Gannett Road Project. Again, a great... Yeah, if you notice my project highlights, a ton of subsurface water, but what a great project to respond to an immediate need. Our next project was the College View Concrete Project. The purpose of this project was to improve drainage on the roadway. Some of you drove that road frequently and I think the best photo that we didn't capture, and maybe there's a reason why we didn't, was the weeds coming out of that curb and gutter. When you can grow organics on top of concrete or through concrete, it's a bad road. It's a bad subsurface. Final cost of this project was $201,000. The engineer's estimate was $250,000. Right here, I need to give a plug to our city staff. Don Wilhelm started this project before taking on other employment. Brendan Toman finished this project, put it out to bid, and Monty Nordrick was there every single day working on the project. So, as an aside, we went to a meeting with the legislature... No, it was the Wyoming Water Development last week. And the good mayor of Saratoga had a city clerk with him and he says, "You know, I tend to never take on a job that my city clerk can't do." So, I tend to never take on a job that Brendan Toman can't do because he's wonderful and he does a great job with everything that he's taken on with this new role that he has with the city. Monty Nordrick is the exact same. So, a couple images there for you to look at, but some project notes to be aware of. This was bid out to have spot repairs along the west side of the road. Contractor came back and said, "You know what? We think we can give a better job. We can do a better job, give a better product, and stay within our bid estimate if we just slip the entire west side." Meaning, we place brand-new concrete along that west side. That's what they did. So, that whole west side is brand-new concrete. We couldn't do that on the east side because of some of the adjoining sidewalk and just because of some of the other issues there, but we still did the spot repairs with the concrete. And now, with those invested funds, the road drains better and we don't have weeds growing out of the concrete. The next project was a shared project with the 1% and the Senate... Excuse me, the wastewater fund. This is the E-Spell Sanitary Sewer and Road Rehabilitation Project. The interesting thing with this project is that we didn't plan on repaving the entire street. We didn't have the funds. We didn't think we had the budget. We were planning on replacing the sewer and doing a nice patch and blending in and overlaying over top of it with some ADA improvements and concrete improvements. The estimate on this job was $303,000. The final cost was $254,000. Came in under our estimate. Let's go through some photos, but here's the initial work of milling the edges. I'll get back to what I was talking about, what we were planning on doing, and I'll finish that up as we get to the next photo. But here is something interesting that we had to address. E-Spell has irrigation running along the side of it. It's important. Some of our residents use irrigation, but irrigation, when it's not handled well or if it's old infrastructure, really damages roads. So, if you look at your top-left photo, the open ditch wasn't that open, if you can tell. There's a power pole sitting in the middle of it, going into the diversion box. There's also a lot of overgrowth. So, we decided this is the opportune time to fix that irrigation line. Rocky Mountain Power worked with us. They relocated their power pole. As you can see in the bottom-left, that power pole is cut off. We excavated it down at that diversion box and found that it was leaking. Where does that water go when it leaks? Underneath the curb, under your road, saturates the soils and accelerates the degradation of your roadway. So, we took care of it right away. Contractor was very successful in proposing a solution. Staff was as well. We shared those costs with some of our city funds and 1% funds to replace some of the irrigation line and definitely solve this problem here that you see in those photos. Getting back to what we planned on doing and what we ended up doing, we planned on not building that whole road again, but as we got into the project, again, with Brendan and a great local contractor, an option was explored and ended up being implemented where we milled off all of the asphalt. Initially, we took it off-site and started crushing it and decided we can probably use this material with our road base. We brought it back. We mixed it with the road base, blended it together. You can see on the left, that is a new road base for that road. That's a new road. The asphalt's not the road. What's below it is. And I can tell you that the paving contractor 71 said that's been... That has been one of the hardest roads they've paved over in a long time. A lot of that came from local contractor suggestion and again, the work of a good city engineer. So, that represents our E-Spell Sanitary Sewer Project. We move on to our next, which is the Village Drive Rehabilitation Project. What was the purpose of this one? Village Drive had concrete issues. It had asphalt issues, subgrade issues, and by the way, the intersection is a little bit confusing. This project I like to highlight because we implemented the public process quite a bit on this. We had two public meetings with people in that area and asked their opinion of how, one, they want the project to go, but more importantly, how do they want that intersection to be changed? We all remember how confusing that intersection was. Through that public process, I think we came up with a redesign that is technically sound but also took into account the feedback from our residents. I can tell you right now, we weren't planning on doing what we did there. We wanted to have a normal intersection. We wanted to do it standard to what is in some of the guidebooks that we follow. We took the feedback of the community and I think we gave them what they wanted and still improved the intersection. The estimate on this job was $683,000. Final cost was $680,000. Again, efforts from our local staff to design that, but we used Apex Engineering to finish the design. Couple interesting things. This shows a little bit of the precondition that alligatoring on the right side was pervasive throughout the south end of that road. The other thing that we'll see is the thickness of existing asphalt was very minimal in certain points. These are the islands right on that north side. And we found that was, as the mill went through there, there was maybe in some spots an inch and a half of asphalt. Standards, at least three to four. And that's the minimum. We also found that as you approached the canal, we were again at about an inch, inch and a half of asphalt. The subgrade, and I commend Eric Carr for helping on this too, we looked at that and realized the subgrade was in pretty good condition considering how thin the asphalt was, making some good design choices. We were able to keep what was good and improve what was on top of it. Lot of concrete work on this job. And there's a nice paver going through. You drive through that neighborhood now. I don't know if this happens to anybody else. Maybe I'm weird, but I feel like when I drive that, I'm six inches taller, but it's just because the road's taller. These two.
It's just three inches.
It feels like six though, doesn't it? All right. So, again, the highlights on this one is good, I think, community participation, good feedback to get a successful project. To close out our project rundown for this year with the 1%, we did the South 8th East Rehabilitation Project. What was the purpose? That road was in terrible shape. I think it was paved with leftover pavement asphalt over the years. That's how it was paved. We didn't have any idea of what the subgrade was. We had no idea what the strength was and that road receives a lot of truck traffic going to the sale barn. So, prior to doing anything with a bid or project, we went out and did cores on that. We got information so that we provided a long-lasting solution. There's nothing worse than investing dollars to then go back and invest again because we didn't do it right the first time. So, we invested time, do the cores, we understood what we had there, and came up again with a good solution. Final cost on this was $72,000. Our estimate was almost $140,000. So, great work. The other highlight on this is we had a small window to do this. One, with weather. Two, with the sale barn operations. We had about a week of window before sale barn went to two-a-days and a local contractor bid it, understood the conditions, and got it done. And I think Mother Nature helped us just a little bit on that one, which we're grateful for. So, the highlight, 51% of the cost. The other is we kind of used the same strategy that we did on Bell where we rejuvenated the existing base with the existing asphalt. We milled it in, we crushed it, and you'll notice the project... The process on this, excuse me, you can see the mill machine there on the middle-right, milling up the edges. There it is as it's getting blended together with the existing graders putting it down and then finally, the asphalt's put over top of it. Again, the good part of that roadway is underneath the asphalt and we did, I think, an appropriate job firming up the subgrade, paving that road, and making it so it can accept truck traffic and be good for the next 30, 40 years. So, that's our quick rundown.
Widen it, too.
We did widen it. Thank you, Mayor. We did widen that. But let's go through a report card on the finances of this. I mentioned a little bit of what our estimates were and what the final costs were, but I also wanted to show how it came in on bid and then if we had any additional costs that we change ordered into the project. And we did on each job, but I think they were responsible and I think we came out with the best product possible while we were doing the work. E-Spell Sanitary Sewer, again, $303,000. Bid amount was 234, 77% of the estimate. We had additional expenditures of $20,000. Some of that was the additional quantities to build a brand-new road for a minimal amount of expense and then also repairing some of that irrigation. We also upsized the sewer line. The existing was six-inch. When it was designed, we felt that we could put back the six just because of the demand. However, that was a bad idea and we fixed it when we were there. We wanted an eight-inch sewer. And one of the main reasons is you get better capacity. Eight-inch is pretty standard. And then even more so, from an operation standpoint, we cannot get our camera down a six-inch line without difficulty. So, getting the eight-inch, you upside the pipe without a lot of extra cost and therefore we had 9% additional costs above what the bid amount was, but we received a lot of value, especially again with that brand-new road. College View, 250, came in at 191, again, 77%. We had additional expenditures of $9,000 and change, 5% overage over the bid. The change orders on that was quantity adjustments. Some of the concrete that we tied into on the east side had ASR in it and as we saw cut it, you just kept chasing it because it kept crumbling from the bottom of it. So, we had to take a little bit more quantities on the concrete and then also, we did a few larger asphalt patches so that we could ensure that the crown of the road drained to the gutter and not to the face of the curb and just stayed in the roadway. So, a few modifications on quantities represent that 5% increase over the bid amount. Village Drive, 683, 2... Or, excuse me, 627, almost 628 on the bid amount, and we had additional expenditures of $52,000. A lot of that was because when we milled out between those islands, we only found an inch and a half of asphalt. Rather than overlaying over top of basically nothing, we dug it down. We did it right. We put a good road there for everybody. Same thing with the ASR. We started chasing curb and gutter. It's a little frustrating when you make a saw cut and then you just have to keep chasing it. That ASR is a real problem in our town. The concrete eats itself from the inside. It may even look good on the top, but underneath it's rubble. So, we want to get as much of that out as we can. And I should note that in our specs, we're mitigating ASR. Lastly, South 8th Street, 139, almost 140, again, came in at 70,000, almost 71. We had $1,200 change order and that was just justifying quantities on the asphalt because we went a little wider in some areas. And we ensured we tied in appropriately to the county property. I think that's a pretty good report card. We kept within our budget first and then we didn't change order of the projects except for what was necessary and it was minimal when we look at the percentages. So, that was brief. I get talking quickly when I'm trying to be brief, but I want to say that I'm very grateful for my staff and grateful for the council, for your support, and for our 1% committee because these dollars with... Without them, what I should say, these dollars are very important. Without them, our roads would be in terrible shape and we would have no money to improve them. So, this 1% is very critical for our community and I'm grateful for the citizen report support.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'd also like to mention Councilman Bailey has been to every force meeting that I've ever seen and I appreciate his input and support there. So, thanks.
Thank you.
That's a great report and really good job. So, I can't thank you enough. That worked out well. Kyle, if you're still with us, could we have you give us your report?
Please. I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Thanks for staying with us. We appreciate it. We're gonna go do reports and on to executive session. If you want to or need to drop off, we appreciate your support. Rebecca, could you?
We had our Community Engagement Committee meeting last night, talked about a couple topics. One thing that was brought up was maybe getting with the recent vandalism all over the community. We talked about ways that we can get the community more involved to stop those things from happening. The mayor had mentioned maybe a crime watch of sort. And like I've said from the very beginning, I could say in the meeting last night, the time I got back home from the military is that I think the community just lacked a lot of physical presence in places and that's why things were happening that we didn't want it to happen, such as the city park. And we saw what we've done with City Park, you know? It's improved it a lot. So, that's something the community's gonna start working on is doing a crime watch. And then also, we talked about the police department and their current workload and call load and everything else and trying to mitigate that as well for them so they can focus on getting out there and correcting these things. Next thing on the agenda was talking about the Holiday Festival, which kicks off on December 6th, which was mentioned for a brief moment in here earlier with Jeremy. Any businesses in the community can enter into the decorating contests of their windows simply going to the website, rivertonholidayfestival.com. There's also going to be a parade that same night on December 6th. There's a nice calendar with all different types of events as well, so please check that out. We also talked about filling an opening on the committee, so that will be most likely done after the first of the year so we can go ahead and get over the holidays. But that's about it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Cory?
Your Honor, I was just going to touch on the Holiday Festival on December 6th as well. I wasn't able to make it to the Community Engagement Committee last night, but I've actually been talking to some of our neighbors in our neighborhood after that last council meeting about starting a neighborhood watch over there as well and getting some signs. And I think that would help by letting people know that there is a presence. That is all that I have at this time, though, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. We missed you, but we knew you were doing something good.
Yeah. I missed you guys.
Mike?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, I had the pleasure of going down and attending the Governor's Business Forum for the state of Wyoming. And there was a lot of great information down there. Needless to say, with the budget session coming up this year, there's a lot of real concern because the budget is extremely tight, and they're looking for every way they can to cut expenses and that kind of stuff. And so it's, it's going to be a challenging time for them. On a good note, they talked about a lot of great things and business incentives that are going on, and, and all kinds of, you know, seminars and speakers on, on better ways to do business and all the great things that Wyoming does. Wyoming is still classified as one of the best business states in the union. And, and so, you know, I think it's, Wyoming is a great place to do business. We've got great people. We just need to all keep working positively to, you know, keep that going. So it was a really productive couple of three days. We, the governor talked a little bit about creating a culture of, you know, efficiency and cost savings, because I think it does come from, you know, the, the people that are working it every day, like with, with our staff and city employees. I think, you know, we could sit up here on, on our little stands up here and demand they do certain things, but realistically, the everyday city employee is the one that's going to be able to tell you where there's things that could be made more efficient or saved or whatever. And I think so, everybody from, every employee of the city, all of us, I think if we, you know, just have a culture of being as efficient and, you know, cost effective as we can, that we can make a difference. And we can get through, you know, tighter times like we've had this year. Our budget was a little short, and we had to cut some things that we didn't necessarily want to. But I think everybody working together, you can make those savings and get by and keep the city running in an efficient and cost effective manner. And so I think, I think that was an important thing that I brought back, and it just reflected what I think we as a city of Riverton are trying to do also. What else? And I guess I'd like to reflect also, like what Kyle said, I think the force committee has done a fantastic job. I'll come out and say it, it's a very frugal group of individuals on that committee. And they are very tight with the, with the taxpayers' money, and that's a good thing. Right now, they're in the process of analyzing the different projects that we have coming forward for next year so that city staff can get the bids out early. And I think that's one of the reasons we've been able to save a lot of money, as Kyle showed in his presentation. You know, we got a lot of things under engineers' estimates, and a lot of that's because we had the bids ready, we got them out early when the contractor, the contractors were hungry and didn't have other projects that, that, you know, they were maybe too busy to bid on, and so the prices go up. And so I think we've done a great job with that. And, and we've picked good projects, and we've got them done. And I think it's just fabulous if we can go in and, like on East Bell, where we end up with a brand new street as opposed to one that's been patched and put together and not spent really a whole lot more money. And so I think credit goes to the city staff and the contractors for all working together and really making that work. And I guess my only other comment is, again, I've seen in the news and everything about the different areas that we've had some vandalism, and it's really disappointing to me. And I think the, the public just needs to understand, they need to be watching and paying attention. And when they see something, we need to call the police department, if that's the appropriate thing, or call City Hall and tell them there's a problem here, a problem there. Because, you know, so many times I've talked to people, and they go, "Well, yeah, I saw this, but I just really didn't see anything. I didn't figure they'd do anything," or whatever. Well, that's, they can't do anything if you don't call them. And you can't expect the police department to show up if you don't call and say there's a problem. Or you can't expect the Public Works Department to come fix an issue when they haven't been told there's an issue. And so I think all of us as citizens need to make sure we're letting people know when there's an issue that needs taken care of. And I think the police department and city staff will do their best to get out there and fix those problems. And it may not be immediately, and it may not exactly what you want, but they're going to react. And, you know, I've never had them not show up when I called them. So, you know, I think it's important, and it's our job as citizens to make sure we let the people know when there's a problem. And that's how we can fix things. And so, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your work. Tim?
The only thing I guess I wanted to bring up is the groups that have been raising money towards the replacement of the statue that was vandalized at the Veterans Park Memorial. And I think that's incredible. I know that Yow Today had been working on that. And then also the Depot Foundation and just, vandalism is one of the most frustrating things to deal with, especially when you have no leads, you don't have any idea who it is. You know, you can't hold the person who did it accountable if you can't figure some things out about it. Which, I mean, in my day job, that's what I like to do, is hold people accountable.
Correct.
But I will say though, that when things like this happen, and I'm always impressed with the city of Riverton, the citizens of the city of Riverton, that when things like this happen, they're very willing to get together, get money together and help people out. It just astounds me to see it. So, I just wanted to thank everybody who's been working towards that and seeing problems and trying to address them, and being willing to financially assist with everything. I mean, we have young kids with cancer and all of that. People just are willing to put money towards it, and I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Carla?
I don't have a whole lot, Your Honor. I do want to give a plug for the 15th Annual Festival of Trees. That's happening on December 5th and 6th. December 5th is family night, so I hope everybody can come out and enjoy that. It's always a great time. And then, of course, we still have sponsorship tables for the gala. That's Friday, the 6th. So I hope everybody comes out for that. There is a meeting tomorrow night for the, the Residential Treatment Center that we've been talking about. 6 o'clock here in Council Chambers, is that correct? Yes. Just wanted to make sure. Other than that, I think that's about all I've got right now.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a handful of things. Quick reminder that our ECDAs is on the 27th. It goes at 7:00 AM at the Sundowner. We do have WAM Winter Conference coming up in February. It seems like that's a ways off, and then all of a sudden, December gets here, and we're trying to figure it out. We have reserved some rooms. Megan, I believe we have four, four. We have two left. If anybody is interested, it's the 26th, 27th, 28th. That's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It is the legislative session, obviously, so we are going to be probably spending some time tracking some of those items, going to the Capitol and making sure that we're having the appropriate conversations. So if anybody is interested, if they could let us know in the next week, so we can either release the other rooms or get somebody in those, please let us know. You can call myself or Megan, and we'll get it taken care of. Emails work too. We are working, speaking of the vandalism that has gone on, we are working with Veterans Park, discussing the potential security upgrades that can help them alleviate any future challenges. We've met with them twice this week. And we have some ideas, we have some resources that if we partner together can kind of aid everybody. And we have a great team with our IT department. If, I mean, we have new cameras at the, at City Park. They've replaced other cameras throughout the city that have made it, that are so, they're just much better. Allow us a lot better view of activities going on. So we're working on that right now. We hope to be able to bring something forward for approval in the near future. I think it's going to be a good project, and we're happy to work with them. We're sorry to hear that, we're sorry about the, the instigating incident, but we're happy that we can make improvements and be part of that solution moving forward. We did talk about going down to the legislature, and we had talked about our legislative presence and what we're following, and what we're tracking, and what we can do. And there's two items that I did want to bring your attention to that weren't talked about as part of the ongoing, ongoing legislative agenda that we had talked about previously. One was state health insurance. This was a big, this was a big win for us, we thought. It was going to be really good. But after we found out that we, we did the work, and we did the leg, especially Kristen did the legwork to get us, so we could be part of that, and we were going to see a savings, in the last year, they've upped the price twice. And now there's legislation introduced that would remove cities from it, and any city that gets in it would remove after their initial term. It doesn't make a ton of sense when it ceases to be cost effective for us now to go fight it terribly. It's sad in, on some levels, because it was going to be, it was, it was going to be a good win for us. It was going to help us a good deal. So that's, that's sad to report, but it is what it is. The other item that we are beginning to track is a item that is through corporations that is dealing with local, local authority, so the authority of council, to require certain things with, certain items within any development agreements, or any subdivision agreements, or any PUDs or the like. Currently, that power and the ability to require something is from a developer, in terms of items such as workforce housing or the like, could, is allowed. It's about, council may do it, they may not do it. The bill seeks to reduce that by saying you can't ever do it. And the reason that we're tracking that is it immediately impacts your local control of the things that go on here. And we've talked about those things. Our standpoint has been local control should stay local. So we will be tracking that. We're going to see what happens with it if, once it comes out of committee and gets to the floor, and if there are any amendments or the like. So we will be watching those too. Your Honor, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Since we last met, we had the ribbon cutting on Federal, which was a, was a great opportunity. We were missing some sidewalks and striping, and it was fun to see the stripes go down today. And the barriers moved back, and I believe 20 miles an hour is still in effect, but left-hand turns are permitted. So, we appreciate the public's willingness to work with us. I believe that has been a great job. And the contractor has done a wonderful job to try to keep traffic moving and make that a usable surface. So it's going to be fun to, to have that road back here shortly. They're going to continue to pour sidewalks as long as they can, and they're doing a real good job moving their way down. There's a lot of sidewalk missing. I know that Councilman Bailey would like two more accesses to his corner. And so we're, we are missing some things, but we're, we're fortunate to be where we are, and, and the weather has permitted us to get a lot of work done. Another thing, and Mrs. Wildcat, I wish she hadn't left. I would like to thank her. She set up a meeting through Tony with me and, and representatives from the Rappahoe and Shoshone Tribe at the college two weeks ago, basically. And it was just those two individuals, myself, Tony, and, and Mrs. Wildcat. And it was very productive, and we had the opportunity to speak directly to a lot of problems. We were invited by the Northern Rappahoe Council to come out to their council meeting the following Thursday. Tony went with me to that. It was about a two-hour-long discussion, and really good discussion. And I appreciated that opportunity. I also was able to go to the Riverton Valley Irrigation District Meeting and, and speak with their board. That was about an hour and 30-minute meeting, and very, very good information, maybe difficult for us to implement into the city. But they have concerns, and we have lots of irrigation that goes through the city that we need to, to pay attention to, be responsible to. Some of the slides that Kyle showed tonight with the road replacement are, are very reality-based, and we, we have concerns. Staff meeting, I appreciate all staff, and they do a wonderful job. And I, I think that they go above and beyond what's asked of them, and I really do appreciate it. Lander City invited us to a town hall meeting. They talked about shoplifting, and they had a, they had a presentation. They wanted people to bring a photo of what they liked, and maybe a photo of what they didn't like. And so I was ready for some pictures that we didn't like, but we didn't get any. And, and so we had a good discussion. It was about two hours long, and the chief was willing to drive with me. Tony opted out, said something about parenting responsibilities or something like that, but we let him off the hook. But chief and I had a real good time, and we enjoyed that opportunity. And I'd like to thank the chief for being willing to do that after hours. The Engagement Committee is a hard, fast, quick-moving group. We have had some resignations off that panel, and we will need to, to replace those. And so we appreciate those members that have served that council in the, in the past. And we just, we, I can't tell you enough how much work these guys put in, and it's on every level. It's not, it's not just on planning Christmas tree lighting. It's everywhere we go. They are, they've got their finger in the, in the dyke. I appreciate them. I had a meeting this morning with Lander Mayor, Hudson Mayor, and myself, and F-Tag Director, and there's some good things moving, and we need to keep pushing hard to achieve those things. And a lot of action that's being taken care of inside Fremont County. And so, the other thing that I would like to ask is, is we do have the 56 permit that Tony's spearheading and doing a really good job on it. Fishing game wants a deer count. And I was, I cracked my windshield on that famous drive to Salt Lake and back, and so I went down to get that repaired. And Olson, down at Olson's Auto Body, and he pointed out to me how many vehicles were in his yard that hit antelope, elk, and, and a buffalo, and a black bear, if you can believe it. And they were immense, and the cost of repairs are really racking up. And, and what we're asking, if you would pick up the phone when you see deer in the city limits, and, and call the city limits and, and tell Megan or Tony or whoever answers that you have just seen two-headed deer on such and such a street, so that we can turn those numbers into the, into the fishing game. We would really appreciate it.
We can report that on, online, on the website.
Yeah. And any, any means that you pick that works.
Call Megan.
Megan would love those phone calls, wouldn't she, Megan? I just volunteered you because I've seen you sitting at that desk out front.
Her cell phone number is?
And so you, we, you can text Tony. Tony's picking up all those and putting them in a file. So we have game and fish. He's even taking pictures of the ones he sees. And so it is important that we understand that that is a, a problem that we maybe can help if we just get some good information. And so that's the last thing that I have to ask for, is if the citizens would help us with that. And when I pulled out of, I get to go up and I, I really enjoy that. I get to go up to CWC and, and help with the games, the basketball games. And as I pulled out of there both nights, there were great, big, beautiful buck deer in the, in the roadways. And it would be nice to have them.